Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting in December. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the early closed session meeting notice dated November 27, 2023, which is probably distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and up at the back of the room.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Ms. Singh?
Present.
Present, thank you, and will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notes regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the service meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36, Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Horizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments may be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length.
Thank you.
Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the regular enclosed session minutes of November 13, 2023?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Minutes are approved. We're moving on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting. I'm glad you could all come. Two short announcements. The Toys for Tots Holiday Toy Drive continues through December 15. I'm sure you saw the boxes out there in the atrium. There's a list on the city website at cityofsummit.org of donations, box locations, and there are a couple of boxes, as I just said, right outside Council Chamber. Thank you to everyone that donated. If you have not and would like to purchase a gift for a child, bring new unwrapped toys by next Friday. That is when the PBA and the FMBA will be transporting the gifts to the Marine Corps Distribution Center. We are very proud to participate in this program every year. The holiday season at Summit is always a lot of fun, and this year is no exception, provided no more rain like we got yesterday, or Sunday. There will be free holiday parking from December 9th to the 30th at all 90-minute on-street spots, and please know that time limits are being strictly enforced. Parking in the Bank Street parking lot and the first level of the Tier Garage are also free. As always, there is one hour of free parking in the DeForest Avenue Park and Shop lots. On Saturdays, December 9th, 16th, and 23, there are free horse-drawn carriage rides and live music in the downtown. And on Sunday, December 10th, at 6:00 p.m., there will be a menorah lighting on the Village Green. More information on holiday events is available on the city website at cityofsummit.org and on the Summit Downtown website at summendowntown.org. And it was very busy in Summit on Saturday, so I hope it continues to be that way. So, there we go. See you on the 19th.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Administrator Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just two items. One, dealing with leaf collection. This is the last week for curbside leaf collection. It ends on Friday, December 8. Leaves should be placed on the curb in paper biodegradable bags for pickup on household trash collection bins. Property owners should not break or blow leaves into piles in the street. Please do not include twigs, branches, or other yard debris in leaflets. More information is available at cityofsummit.org/leafcollection. Leaves can also be composted at the municipal transfer station year-round. Check the city website for transfer station hours and permit information. And then the second item is dealing with the downtown employee parking permit renewals. The Summit Parking Services Agency has extended the renewal deadline for downtown employee parking permits to December 31, 2023. The downtown employee permits expired on November 30. In addition, residents are reminded to apply for the resident parking and transfer station permits that were due October 31. Renewals can be completed online at citiesummit.org/parking. And that's it. That's all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to my report. I have a few things. So first, Summit is a community with a great deal of diversity. That diversity is cultural, ethnic, racial, socioeconomic, religious, and more. This diversity strengthens our community. It also means that at any given moment, the suffering of people around the world is likely to impact members of our community here in Summit. We are lucky to have the Interfaith Council, a group of spiritual leaders whose mission is to, as stated in the Book of Jeremiah, seek the welfare of the city. Since the horrific acts of terror committed against Israel by Hamas on October 7, the Interfaith Council has held two vigils. One, in solidarity with Israelis and Jews in our community who are suffering, and the other in solidarity with Palestinians and Muslims in our community who are suffering. I am supremely thankful for the Summit Police Department, whose members have worked to keep the community safe as they gathered to mourn, reflect, and pray. But it is not solely the responsibility of religious leaders to speak about moral principles, to seek to comfort the community, or to lead. I believe it is the responsibility of our elected leaders to also use our voices and take action when necessary. I am thankful that my colleagues voted unanimously to adopt the International Holocaust Remembrance Association's definition of antisemitism. I believe already it has helped to know what is antisemitic and what is not. I will also add that I believe it is possible to support Israel's efforts to seek justice, the release of the hostages, and the elimination of Hamas, and recognize the suffering of Palestinians at the same time. I believe it is possible to seek justice and hope for a lasting peace at the same time. I believe our community will benefit from honest conversation, remembering we are neighbors, and by treating each other with the respect and grace that neighbors deserve. On a different topic, we learned last week that Greg Elliott has moved on and is no longer the franchise owner of Tap into Summit. In that capacity, he provided a vital service to this community, and we thank him for his contribution over the past decade. Tap shared the news of the day in an unbiased way, reporting verified facts, and always with dedication and allegiance to the truth. I am hopeful for the rest of the community and for whoever takes over the ownership and editor roles that this person is met with decency and respect in a way that Greg was not this past election cycle. Next, I would like to update the community on the lawsuit that was filed against the city by our former redevelopment partners, Broad Street West Managers. Our special legal counsel will soon file a motion and brief to dismiss the case, and we will await the decision of the judge. Finally, I believe one of the most impactful things accomplished by council during my time has been the adoption of the sidewalk installation and maintenance policy, sometimes referred to as the Sidewalk Master Plan, but I think that term is a bit overused. It is a non-binding planning document that outlines where there are sidewalks now and where sidewalks should be, how the installation of new sidewalks will be prioritized, and how they will be funded. I would like to ask Director Schreger to take just a few minutes to speak about the ongoing work to update that very important document.
Thank you, Council President. Further to what you had said, in October 2019, the governing body did adopt the Sidewalk Installation and Maintenance Plan, and it was created with the purpose of unifying all the codes and standards that the city had in various places and to use as a planning document for identifying locations for new sidewalk moving forward. It was first done in 2019 with a lot of recommendations. One of the recommendations was to ensure that it's reviewed every two years, which the first review would have been 2021, which it was reviewed, though it was a pandemic. It was decided no changes were needed at that time. Here we are in 2023, which would be the next two-year renewal period, and we have been diligently working on revising both the map and the body of the report that accompanies it. So what I will do is I'll come up and hand out the new maps that we have created that identify where sidewalks should go, where sidewalks are, and where sidewalks actually there's some locations that could be removed, which I'll pass out, but then it'll be emailed around later tonight. The intent is really, in the next few weeks or as we begin next year, is to re-release this for review and comment and discussion, so we can formally readopt it so that the governing body can use it as a path moving forward.
Okay, wonderful. We look forward to reading that and making it publicly available as well. Thank you, Director Schreger. Okay, we're moving on. We have a few ordinances for hearing, so we will start off with the reading of the first one. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 23-3300, ordinance to amend the code, Appendix A, schedule of fees contained in the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit.
Okay, Council Member Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance was introduced at our November 13 council meeting. It amends the city's schedule of fees, including ones that fall under the category of Uniform Construction Code, or UCC, related fees. One week after that council meeting, the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs requested that the city add two additional UCC-related items to the fee schedule. Specifically, they are requiring us to add the following. One, fees associated with large, open-volume, single-story spaces like barns and silos. We're unlikely to see many of those requests, but we need to still add those fees associated with them. And two, fees associated with temporary certificates of occupancy. Because we are required to modify the fee schedule to add these two items, we need to introduce a new version of this ordinance later this evening. So this is the required hearing for the original version of the ordinance, after which we will have a vote on final adoption. And during that vote, I recommend to my council colleagues that we vote no so that we can introduce the new version of the ordinance shortly thereafter. I move to open the hearing on this ill-fated ordinance.
Can we get a second? Okay. Any comments? We can, we're going to have another one of these in a couple of weeks. This is one of those procedural things. No comments from members of council. Comments from members of the public, there'll be another chance. All right, we're going to close the hearing on that one. Thank you, Council Member Miniger. The second one, please. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance for hearing 23-3301, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-10, One-Way Streets of the Revised General Ordnances of the City of Summit.
Okay, thank you very much. Council Member Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance will amend the city code to designate Bryant Parkway as a one-way street running from Orchard Street to Springfield Avenue. Traffic volume and speeding have been a longtime concern on Bryant Parkway, and it has long been used as a cut-through by cars traveling from Route 74 to Springfield. Prior attempts to address these issues using time-turn restrictions and other enforcement strategies did not adequately address the issue. In 2019, the Engineering Department held a neighborhood meeting on Bryant Parkway with residents from Bryant Parkway, Edison Drive, and Mead Court, which I attended along with Council President Vartan and Mayor Reddick and other members of council who are no longer on the dais. A number of options were presented to the residents at this meeting, and this meeting led to studies of the Morris and Orchard signal timing and upgrades to that intersection, which were completed in 2020. Because of the change in traffic patterns during the pandemic, further studies couldn't be completed until late 2021 and 2022. The one-way conversion was studied in 2022 and showed that the measure would address concerns, and also pointed to additional modifications of the Orchard-Morris intersection to add a left-turn lane onto Orchard. This past summer, the Safety Committee and the CAPS Committee approved the implementation of a temporary one-way conversion. The responses of the neighbors have been overwhelmingly positive, and the traffic police on-site observed marked improvements, as did our city engineers. The temporary conversion was extended, and now this ordinance, if passed, will make this traffic pattern permanent. I move to open this hearing.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the hearing is open. Comments from members of council.
I guess I'll go, Council President.
Yep.
Through you, Council President. Director Schreger and I asked a lot of questions last week regarding some specifics that I wanted answers for, so thank you for answering all those questions today. I was just wondering if you would want to go over your answers, which seemed satisfactory to me, but if you just wanted to inform the public. Secondly, I heard from a lot of residents today, so that was exciting. It sounds like the new traffic pattern is really working for Bryant Parkway. I also heard from a lot of residents that on the outskirts of certain streets that a few weeks ago it was impacting them from a timing perspective, so I think we should just keep an eye on that. But I was really excited to hear from all the residents today, and I'm looking forward to all the answers that you've gotten in the last seven or 10 days. Thank you.
Sure. Aaron.
Certainly, through you, Council President. I will just read the abbreviated question and provide the answer, but it was just, you know, what approval is required to do this? And the primary approval is the passing of this ordinance tonight to convert it to a one-way. The next approval would be if there's any signage placed on a county road, we would need their approval for that. The county has been in the loop the entire time. They're aware of this, so if it is needed for signage, I'm sure they will grant that pretty quickly. Another question was just, one of the reports out there, it was done by Colliers previously, does mention the concept of adding a left-turn lane at the traffic light with Morris and Orchard, which is something we would do indefinitely if this one-way goes through. Right now, the traffic signal does function reasonably close to what it was prior to this, but we would pursue that. The county has seen our proposed plan and is at least okay with it in concept. Now would just be the formal approval, which I'm sure will be granted. Question was also relative to the Colliers report, mentioned Springfield Avenue is under the jurisdiction of the city. It is from downtown to the Huntley Tavern. The rest of it, which is where Bryant Parkway intersects, is a county road. So again, it would fall back to county approval if we do something there. There was a question regarding crash statistics and pedestrian cyclist data. So a few things there. With crash data, you know, we did not pursue that intensely. It was not being done to resolve a crash situation, though I'm sure there was, and we know of some that have happened on Orchard and Springfield, so that was not looked at. But in terms of bicycles and pedestrians, obviously with the one-way road, Bryant Parkway will become much safer for both traveling there, but it also, when you're removing a turning movement at the intersection, it will just make crossing both Bryant and Springfield and Bryant and Orchard safer, because there is one less movement of vehicles for both cyclists and pedestrians to deal with, so that will occur somewhat naturally through this. How does this impact plow and recycling operations? Luckily, we haven't had the plow in the last few months, but I'm sure we will soon. But DPW did do a memo saying that, you know, recycling has gone on as anticipated, and garbage collection as well, as they feel confident plowing will not be a situation. Question six was about PSCNG, which has been quite active in our neighborhoods this past few years. So the studies that we did have, a follow-up study was a week after their work was completed, which should have permitted normal traffic to resume in the area, so that was factored in when we did do our studies. And then just obviously, you know, there was a question about the costs incurred by the city, which there was some costs related to the installation of the temporary one-way and the study that was done by Dynamic Engineering New Assistus, approximately $20,000 for the combined of the two, so.
If I can just make one follow-up comment, Director Schreger, thank you so much for, and those were really important questions that I wanted to answer for the community. The last thing that I would want to mention is for the next, for the next, whoever's on the CAPS Committee, the Capital Projects Committee. When I do look at what it cost us for those 30 days to rent the bollards and the cones, we might as well just buy them. I'm not an engineer, but I think that we could all agree that the cost was, when we talked about what we could actually buy the cones and the bollards for, I think we just need to relook at that and, you know, really count what our inventory is for those cones and bollards. So we spent about $333 a day for that, so that's, you know, something we can look into next year. But thank you very much for your hard work.
Okay.
Through you, Council President. Thank you. Thank you for all the work. I just wanted clarification. You said the, there is, you needed, you said signage on Union County Road. Do we need approval for that? Did we get approval? Is that what you're working on? I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, we will if this becomes permanent. For right now, signs that may have been put up in a temporary state is okay, but anything that's going to be permanent, we would get approval for, so.
Okay. And what's considered temporary?
For just the study we had, so Union County was aware, but if signs that were required as part of it were just, you know, assumed as part of a temporary study, so.
Okay.
Now that said, you know, the vendor did install them according to MUTCD, so any signs we put up temporarily were done properly in accordance with the rules and regulations, but the county would approve if they're going to formally go up there.
Okay. I just have one final question, I promise. Could we just have temporarily striped it besides renting those bollards and cones?
It could have been, it would have been an option, yes. But the barrels do provide more of a visual aid for it, so, because even some of the streets, we have like a Butler Parkway where it's just striped. It doesn't get people to truly pay attention to the traffic pattern change.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Through you, Council President. I just want to acknowledge that this is the culmination of seven or eight years of work.
You scooped what I was going to say.
I scooped you. There you go. So this is really a victory, and I just, you know, just jumped in in this last little bit, but I want to thank Chief Segorsky, Lieutenant Daley, Director Schreger for educating each of us so thoughtfully and thoroughly on this, on the whole sort of history and the whole origin story of this, and took us on that journey. It was very compelling evidence, very compelling storytelling about how things were before, how things were then changed for the better during the trial, and it inspired much confidence in me hearing Lieutenant Daley specifically describe it as just a real big win. And I think that was your quote, and he doesn't say things like that lightly. So for me, once I heard that, and then really the facts back it up, so I felt very confident supporting it. And I also want to thank my neighbors, those of you who reached out to us very effusively with a lot of praise. There were some people who are more concerned, and I hear you, and we'll watch and we'll see, and anything we can do to mitigate anything down the line, but I really look forward to voting affirmatively for this tonight, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You know, this is the eighth council to talk about this, the third police chief to work on this. Community meetings, dozens and dozens and dozens of conversations with residents, emails, phone calls, stops in the grocery store. This is, this is a, this is a big deal, and extremely proud to be supportive of it. So I think with that, we should open it up to the comments for the public. Anybody? Come on up, just come on up. Please give us your name and your address, and try to keep to around three minutes, please.
I'm Audrey Pantages. This is my husband, Tony.
Excuse me, ma'am, can you speak into the microphone so people home can hear you? You can move them, I can close it anyway.
Okay. My first time. This, I'm Audrey Pantages, and this is my husband, Tony, and we live at 32 Edison with our two-year-old daughter. We bought our home the end of 2021, and we love Summit. We love the town. We love living here. And with this new traffic pattern, we had noticed a noticeable decrease in cars cutting through Edison, because they use our street as a cut-through to go down Orchard to avoid the light, and we have noticed a huge decrease in the cars that have cut through that don't live on our street, don't know there's many, many little kids living on that street, not just our own, but our neighbors as well, and there's no fences there, so we're really happy and hopeful that this will go through and make it just a safer street overall. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Michael Freeman.
Good evening.
F R E E M A N, through Bryant Parkway. I'd like to thank the members of council and mayor for actually being resolute with this. It has gone back a long time, and Ms. Fox, as you mentioned, it was neighbors cutting through Springfield, cutting through to Springfield. I came to find out that friends of mine who live in Kennelworth, Cranford, and Westfield would stop by my house because that was a cut-through that they learned from Google Maps. They figured out that I lived there. They stopped, which is cool, so it's not just Springfield residents, it's area residents all the way. They're coming off 24, they're coming off of 287, and it was an incredible increase in 2018. I was one of the ones complaining, and I appreciate you hearing me. Thank you. I'm no stranger to busy streets. I grew up on Morris Avenue here in Summit. I lived on Ashwood Avenue. I lived on Edison Drive, and now I'm on Bryant Parkway. My friends that ask me, why would you want to drive all the way around the block to get home now? It's a hell of an inconvenience. Excuse my language. It's not about the convenience. I am the most quote-unquote inconvenienced. My driveway is 40 feet away from Springfield Avenue. When I turned onto my street to get into my driveway, I cringed every day, waiting for somebody to slam into the back of me. I couldn't back out of my driveway. I had to pull out of my driveway. Trying to back out of my driveway was even more dangerous. So this is not about my convenience, this is about my safety. It was a nightmare. Since this trial began, that's gone. I'm able to get out of the driveway. I'm able to watch people get out of their cars on Bryant Park as they go get out and walk. They're not worried about being hit by cars that are squeezed on the street. It's an incredible, incredible improvement that's noticeable by everyone, and as I said, again, it's not about convenience for anybody, because there, there's nobody more inconvenienced than me. My trip was 40 feet, now it's .6 miles, two extra minutes, which is well worth it, so I thank you, thank you, thank you for finally bringing this to fruition, and hopefully we can get it done, and it'll be a safer city. I can go across the street, enjoy the park, and we can get on to other things. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, I think we're going to close the hearing on this one. Excellent, very good. We're moving on to the next ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 23-3302, an ordinance amending Chapter 35, Articles 17 through 19 of the Development Regulations of the General Code of the City of Summit to address the requirements of the Fair Housing Act, statewide non-residential development fee act, and uniform housing affordability controls regarding compliance with the city's affordable housing obligations.
Okay, Council Member Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance 23-3302 proposes some changes to our city's affordable housing ordinances. I will briefly summarize and outline of some of these proposed changes. Currently, our affordable housing ordinances are spread out among Chapter 8 and Chapter 35 of our code book. What we will, what we are proposing to do is to place all the ordinances together into the DRO, which is Chapter 35, since they primarily affect development within the city. The second set of changes are the only, are some changes to the city's ordinances to bring them up to date, and also make just two discretionary changes while these adjustments are being made. And they relate to the residential development fee and include an increase from 1% to 1.5%, which is the max allowed by COA, the Council on Affordable Housing. These fees are the main vehicle the city uses to pay for its affordable housing efforts. Most of the city's residential development is carried out by developers who come into town and tear down and rebuild new homes. 11 of the 15 surrounding municipalities collect 1.5% already as their residential development fee, and so Summit is only one of four local municipalities that are still at the 1% level. So local developers are really already used to this 1.5% amount. The second change we are proposing is to close one of the new residential development loopholes. So by doing so, we're creating a new residential, a new definition for new residential development. This will simultaneously prevent charging residents who are simply making minor renovations and closes a loophole that developers use to attempt to avoid paying this fee. Like, for example, a developer might attempt to avoid paying a fee when an entirely new home is built, but just a portion of an old and closes a loophole that developers use to attempt to avoid paying this fee. Like, for example, a developer might attempt to avoid paying a fee when an entirely new home is built, but just a portion of an old foundation wall might exist, for example. The planning board met on November 27th and determined that this ordinance with these proposed changes are not inconsistent with our city's master plan. With that in mind, I move to open the hearing for this ordinance.
I second.
Okay. The hearing is open. Do we have comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, I think we'll close the hearing on that one. Next one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 23-3303, an ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, amending Chapter 18 entitled Streets and Sidewalks of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit by adding Section 18-13.1 at SEC entitled Wireless Telecommunications Use of Public Rights of Ways.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. The proposed ordinance 23-3303 establishes regulations for telecommunications companies to use when using our public rights of way by amending Chapter 18, Streets and Sidewalks of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit. This ordinance creates an administrative process for the review of applications submitted by wireless providers for the installation of telecommunications, including small cell wireless facilities in public rights of way. The requirements are intended to encourage the co-location of wireless facilities and minimize aesthetic and functional impacts on public streets and public sidewalks. We've been working on this for at least the year that I've been on council, started in Capitol Projects, then came over to the Administrative Policies Committee, now it's back in Capitol Projects, finally is ready. The planning board met the end of last month and determined that this ordinance with these proposed changes is not inconsistent with our city's master plan. I move to open the hearing for this ordinance.
I second.
Okay. The hearing for this ordinance is open. Do we have comments from members of council? Go ahead. No, you can go first.
Through you. I didn't know if Tom Barons had, if anybody was gonna come up and speak, just to give a little bit of context around, or, I saw him in the, through you, Council President.
Sure. If you're prepared, do you want to just give us a quick summary of what we're doing here?
That'd be great.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. Tom Barons with the firm Burgess Associates. We are the city's planning consultant. Thank you for the overview, Councilwoman, I think you teed it up nicely. So, I would just add that I would say about 100 municipalities in New Jersey, that's just an estimate, probably have adopted an ordinance similar to this, and the idea is that without such an ordinance, one of the, one or all of the four main wireless providers, which include AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint T-Mobile, and now Dish Network, can propose to install these, what are called small wireless network facilities in the municipality, and if you didn't have regulations in place, basically you wouldn't have a procedure to review those applications to require certain design components and have control over the siting process. In addition, this ordinance includes several definitions, which helps guide the review process. As I mentioned, it includes siting and design requirements, it establishes procedures for the repair and removal of facilities if there are any issues, it also establishes fees for the use of the rights of way, and it also requires that these facilities allow for city connectivity for smart devices, which may also include EV parking facilities and other types of monitoring technology. Again, it's, I think it's worth noting that these applications will only come from the four providers, so I don't think the city will be inundated with applications, and the way the ordinance was structured is that when a provider wants to come to town with this technology, they would submit a comprehensive plan, so the city would get the full picture of the locations and the types of technology that they would want to install. We do recommend that the city consider consulting with a third-party wireless expert to vet those applications. We do have a recommendation or two toward that end, and also the ordinance establishes an escrow requirement so that the city can conduct these review processes with no cost to the city, so it's the providers who would pay for those reviews. And in general, in creating the ordinance, we did it with several goals in mind, one to maximize co-location, another to minimize the overall number of facilities, again, to control placement and to require concealment. What concealment means is that there are certain industry stealth poles, is what they call it, and they're designed to integrate the antennas and radios within a pole, it could be a light fixture or other type of pole, where really they're fairly well disguised, and in the case of, let's say, the downtown, for instance, you could have a light pole that matches the existing poles and may have, you know, perhaps just an extension of three feet above the light fixture, which blends in nicely with the existing pole, whereas if you didn't have the regulations, you could have up to four providers trying to attach to an existing telephone pole with, you know, sort of, in a cluttered way, which is, you know, less visually desirable. So, again, the idea is that this creates a process where the wireless providers will work with the city to, one, provide the service for residents, businesses, and visitors so that everyone has the connectivity that we all sort of expect today, and to allow for new technologies to work, but also to do it in a controlled way that makes sense for the city and doesn't diminish the functionality or aesthetics of the downtowns that you've worked so hard to maintain, which we appreciate. So, for those reasons, we recommend that the city consider adopting this ordinance.
Thank you. So, just, thank you, Tom. So, I'm just looking at the faces of some people in the, in the audience. So, we were calling this the 5G ordinance for a while. That was the shorthand of what we were talking about. And when, and, you know, previously you'd have big cell towers, right, and we still do have big cell towers, but now for 5G and conceivably for whatever's coming next, you know, 6, 7, 8G, there's these smaller things but are still pretty big, and they would attach to, you know, in other towns, you can look them up, you can Google them, they're attached to the telephone poles, and often there's like one on every single telephone pole, like, this was a big issue down the shore in one of the shore towns, I forget, but they were all along the boardwalk, and they're just super ugly, like, it's really, they're very ugly. So, what this does is, of course, is make sure that we have some control, we have some say in where they are and how many there are, and ideally what they look like, and encourage them to be together, and not every single pole, and not every single company on every single pole, and of course, obviously, we want to do it in a way that keeps the city well-connected, that we're not a dead zone, but in a way that controls it. So, this is a, this is a, you know, protect the character of the community type of a thing, and I think it's a good thing, so, just thought that might help a little bit. Thank you. Yeah.
Just two quick follow-up questions. The first question, and I'm not sure who to direct this to, Council President, so are we still currently getting the fees from the telephone poles? We're not eliminating that original fee?
That has nothing to do with the business personal property tax that, so, an improvement assessment, the state actually sets that amount, that has no impact on that.
Perfect. And then, this is another question. Do you only put these in the downtown? Like, I know down where I'm at on Brantwood, near 24, it's a complete dead zone. Can you add these 5G areas to specific telephone poles that aren't interconnected to a larger network, I guess, if that makes sense?
They can be added, in theory, anywhere where there's a service need, and ultimately it's up to the providers, and one would hope that they would fill in the gaps in coverage. I mean, that's just a logical thing to think about, and I would think that this sort of small, small cell wireless technology would allow to better fill those gaps in lieu of the, you know, wireless towers that, you know, shoot signals out abroad, that these are really designed to, you know, be located in more densely populated locations and in close proximity to its users for that exact purpose, so I would think that would happen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Through you. So, also, I think that the benefit of this, what you said earlier, is that we could do a GeoMap, kind of assess the whole town to decide where those 5G cell towers should go, or I say towers, but you know what I mean. So, if there is parts of town, not just downtown, but if there are parts that need more service, then we can work collaboratively, right?
I think through that review process, the wireless provider can propose locations, and the city may be able to require locations in working with the providers.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from council? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
We'll open it up to members of the public. Good. Okay, we'll close the hearing on this ordinance, and we'll move on to ordinances for final consideration, and we'll start with Finance. Nicole, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 23-3300, ordinance to amend the code Appendix A, schedule of fees contained in the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit.
Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. Having explained this interesting scenario earlier, I move this ordinance for final consideration. As a reminder, I am voting no on this.
I second.
So, we're gonna have a roll call vote, and I'm gonna ask everybody, really think about it for, for a second, okay?
I say A comes first.
Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Nay.
Ms. Fox.
No.
Ms. Hamlet.
No.
Dr. Levine.
Nay.
Mr. Miniger.
Nay.
Ms. Sank.
No.
President Vartan.
Nay, and I think I should have stopped you, I think it failed a few votes ago, but it's, it's, the motion has failed. We will reintroduce another ordinance in five to 10 minutes. Okay. Thanks, everybody. Okay, moving on to the next one. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 23-3301, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-10, One-Way Streets of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Okay. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Having held a public hearing and having received a number of emails from residents, I enthusiastically move this ordinance for final consideration.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Dr. Levine.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Ms. Sank.
Aye.
President Vartan.
Aye, and the motion carries. Okay, that's excellent. Moving on to the next one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 23-3302, an ordinance amending Chapter 35, Articles 17 through 19 of the Development Regulations of the General Code of the City of Summit to address the requirements of the Fair Housing Act, Statewide Non-Residential Development Fee Act, and Uniform Housing Affordability Controls Regarding Compliance with the City's Affordable Housing Obligations.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Having just completed the hearing for this ordinance, I'd like to move this for final adoption.
I second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Dr. Levine.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Ms. Sank.
Aye.
President Vartan.
Aye, and the motion carries. And on to the next one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 23-3303, an ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, amending Chapter 18 entitled Streets and Sidewalks of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit by adding Section 18-13.1 at SEC entitled Wireless Telecommunications Use of Public Rights of Way.
Okay, excellent. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Having just completed the hearing for this ordinance, I'd like to move this ordinance for final adoption.
I second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Dr. Levine.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Ms. Sank.
Aye.
President Vartan.
Aye, and the motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. We have one, as advertised, ordinance for introduction. Please read this one, Madam Clerk.
ID 10868, ordinance to amend the code Appendix A, schedule of fees contained in the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit.
Okay. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. For continuity purposes, I am gonna reread this introduction thoroughly. This is an ordinance that amends the city's code schedule of fees. Summit charges fees for services provided for licenses for renting of space and equipment, and for purchase of some equipment like golf balls. Departments periodically modify their fee schedule, excuse me, their fee structure in response to increased operating costs such as materials and labor, or expanded program offerings, or some combination of the two, depending on the department. Fee structure changes often follow a thorough review of surrounding communities' fee structures. In the case of community programs, for example, increases to some of those fees are due to a combination of labor costs, but also expanded program offerings and future program offerings. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second.
Okay, and the hearing would be on the next council meeting on the 19th. Any comments from members of council? And we'll take a roll call vote on this one, please.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Dr. Levine.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Ms. Sank.
Aye.
President Vartan.
Aye, okay, the motion carries. Hearing next meeting. All right, moving on to resolutions. We have a bunch from Finance. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 102, excuse me, 10823, and this resolution authorizes the transfer of appropriations in the operating budget from accounts with a surplus to those that are over. This is a regular occurrence in the last two months and first three months of a fiscal year, and this particular set of transfers total $371,440. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? We need a roll call vote on this one as well, please.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Dr. Levine.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Ms. Sank.
Aye.
President Vartan.
Aye, the motion carries. On to the next one, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10825, and this resolution authorizes the schedule of school levy payments. A real quick explanation of how this works, the city collects taxes and then pays them to the schools. Earlier this year, there was a similar resolution passed by council for payments for July through December. The school's fiscal year is July through June of the following year, and the city's fiscal year is the calendar year, so this resolution updates the payment amounts and the dates for the remaining half of the school's fiscal year, which is January through June 2024. Each payment is in the amount of $5,927,607, except for the June 3 payment, which is $1 less than that. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. On to the next one, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10824, and this resolution authorizes the municipal sewer, parking, and school debt service payments, and this is done every year. It includes principal and interest payments for all existing bonds and notes in each of those respective categories, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. On to the next one, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10830, and this resolution authorizes an amendment to an earlier cooperative purchase of new audiovisual broadcast equipment and installation for council chambers and the surrounding spaces. Specifically, this will address sound and volume issues when watching a meeting from the first-floor lobby. It will address Comcast outbound audio issues when broadcasting on HDTV, and to address when broadcasting on HDTV, and to address the need for HDMI switching controls during meetings. This additional equipment and installation totals $17,347.31. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
What is the timeline for, if this does pass, for installation, purchase and installation for this? How soon would we see the benefits?
Michael or Nicole?
I don't have the timeframe at this point.
I'm sure it has to do with availability of whatever equipment we need. So. Yes. We can get a follow-up from Rosie on that, I'm sure, tomorrow. So. Thank you. Okay, other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. On to the next one. Councilmember Miniker.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10854, and this resolution authorizes the shared services agreement with the Borough of Madison for information technology support services. This renews our agreement with Madison to provide a team of IT support staff on an as-needed basis to the City of Summit up to 20 hours per week, a modest 2% increase over the last year's agreement. The total amount of this agreement is not to exceed $108,832, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council.
Through you, Council President. Councilmember Miniker, is it 108 or 103? 103?
It is 103, thank you. 103-832.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There are comments. Comments from members of the public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one, Councilmember Miniker.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10860, and this resolution authorizes Carney Bank to remote property taxes on behalf of their mortgagees via wire transfer directly to the city. As so many other banks have already done and established, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council. Comments from members of the public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Last one from Finance. Councilmember Miniker.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10832, and this resolution declares a vacancy in the finance office for the position of qualified purchasing agent. Having discussed this in closed session, in anticipation of a replacement sometime near through January through March, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council. I'll just say congratulations to Michelle Caputo on her pending retirement. She has done an excellent job, first in the clerk's office and now as our QPA, and she will be incredibly hard to replace, so we want to, I know our finance team wants to get to work on that. Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. We have two from Safety and Health. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Safety, number one, is Resolution 10826. This resolution authorizes the submission of a grant from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, American Rescue Plan Firefighter Grant, for approximately $74,849.20 to purchase protective turnout gear for the Summit Fire Department. There is no match required for this grant, and the firefighters, this is the gear that keeps them safe, and it does wear out and needs to be replaced, and it's quite expensive, so we're always trying to find grant funding to replace the gear as much as we can. So I move this resolution.
Okay, and do we have a second? Thank you. Councilmember Comments? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. On to the next one. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 10855, and pursuant to discussion in closed session, this resolution declares vacancies for a battalion chief, a lieutenant, and a probationary firefighter due to the upcoming retirement of Battalion Chief David Guida, who is a 29-year veteran of the department. And then there will be vacancies caused by this, this vacancy will be filled and will then, those promotions will then create the lieutenant vacancy as well as a probationary firefighter vacancy. And then the resolution also declares an additional vacancy for a probationary firefighter as a result of the upcoming retirement of firefighter Tim Deutsch, who, after 26 years of service with the department. We thank both of these firefighters for their service, and I move this resolution.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, comments from members of council? I'll just add my thanks and congratulations for their many years of service. Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have one from Law and Labor. Councilmember Sank.
Resolution number 10688, approve your 2024 council meeting schedule. That was approved today in the Law and Labor Committee with the understanding that the new council may very well change it, but for now, it gives the committee, it gives staff information on how to set up meetings and so forth.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. That's good, because I already put them in my calendar. All right. Community programs and parking services, we have one. Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 10771. Purpose of this resolution is to approve a one-year contract extension with Dynamic Ride-Sharing Program from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024 for Lyft and Uber Technologies. The cost of this service from this time period is not to exceed $120,000 each per contract year, and the funds for the service will be certified upon inclusion and adoption of the 2024 parking services budget. I would like to move this resolution.
I second. Okay, comments from members of council.
I do want to mention something.
Yeah.
Through you, Council President.
Sure.
Last year, we did the same, the same thing, and we added on an additional step, which was to reduce the amount of city contribution per ride on the ride-share program. It did its job. It did what we predicted. It did not reduce ridership and at the same time reduced the amount of money that the city was expending in this. So it's a great program. I look forward to voting yes on it. I'm glad we were able to bring it back in line with prior year's costs.
I agree with that, yeah.
I'd say I thank you to Director Rita McNanny for providing loads of information in the packet tonight that I ask you for every day, so thanks for all your hard work on this.
I have a quick comment.
Sure.
Through you, Council President.
Please.
I also remember last year learning about this and thinking at the time how innovative and smart of a program this is, and I still feel that way, and I'm glad to hear that your intervention between last year and this year was effective. I think it's a green solution. We all feel the parking crunch, especially for commuters. We all feel the traffic crunch, sometimes downtown a few times a day, and this really, I think, solves, solves for some of that, for some, for some people, and I think it's a really great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I will just add, Michael Rogers, years ago, won an award for this. Still a good idea.
Keep going.
Yeah. It keeps cars out of the parking system. No matter what it costs, it's less than building new parking. And I'll just say, the one thing it does not do is get cars off the road, right? So that's where we have an opportunity, moving forward, to try to figure out how do we get more people walking? How do we get more people biking? You know, I saw somebody rollerblading today, so that's all good stuff. Any other comments? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. Capital Projects and Community Services, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 10818 is a resolution of need to support the Summit Housing Authority in their application to the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, known as NJHMFA, for rehabilitation of many of our affordable housing units. The Summit Housing Authority intends to comprehensively rehabilitate its portfolio of 195 low-income housing units, including its, including its supporting, its supportive infrastructure and adjacent common areas. The Summit Housing Authority sites began operations in 1971 with Glenwood Place, followed by Weaver Street in 1979, and then the Vito Gallo Building in 1986. Significant renovations and modernizations to these units have not occurred since their initial construction. And a New Jersey HMFA requires a resolution of need by this governing body to demonstrate that this City of Summit acknowledges that the proposed project will meet an existing housing need, and that is what we will deliberate and vote on today. This resolution of need and support is a mandatory requirement, and to address this work, the Summit Housing Authority intends to use various sources for funding, including tax-exempt bonds, 4% federal low-income housing tax credits from NJHMFA, and the Summit Housing Authority also intends to request an award of Aspire tax credits from the Economic Development Authority to assist in funding the project. We have some representatives from our Housing Authority here this evening, should anyone have any questions that I have difficulty answering. I will just briefly summarize some of the improvements planned by our Housing Authority. The building exteriors and landscaping will be updated and modernized. There will be some new common, new playgrounds and landscaping in the outdoor areas of these housing units, market-level kitchens, new bathrooms, improving aesthetics and functionality, using energy-efficient appliances throughout, and overall improving energy efficiency overall, so tenants might have cost savings, and also a decreased carbon footprint. These, these proposed changes will significantly improve quality of life for residents, and I believe that we do have an existing need for these units to be rehabilitated in the fashion described, and as such, I move to adopt this resolution.
And I enthusiastically second.
Okay, comments from members of council.
I have a couple of questions through you, Council President.
Sure.
Should I direct them to Director Kennard, or you, or?
If you're prepared to, yeah. Keith is our, is the director of the Housing Authority.
Thank you, Keith. Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. I think obviously this is great. The RAD program is an exciting time to renovate a lot of our existing units, so I think the tenants and residents are excited to get started, so thank you, and Nancy Galetti, for all your hard work on this. I did have a couple of questions when I was looking at, bear with me, I have six or seven. So in the LOI that we currently have with Orbach, it looks like it is dated, I think it was 26 June, and it's 120 days effective from that date. Have we received another formal letter of intent, or are we going to be working in order to get the master development agreement?
We received a request for an extension. We're waiting to take it to our board, but we did receive a formal request for an extension.
Okay, so we can go ahead with this, with that expired LOI, I guess, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay. And then, can you explain what the flow of funds are if you obtain the money from Aspire?
So the flow of funds will essentially be, Aspire is a state tax credit, obviously different than the 4% tax credit, and ultimately what happens is an LLC gets created, which is a combination of the developer and the Housing Authority. That LLC then creates another LLC, which receives the actual tax credits, state tax credits. Those tax credits then flow from that nonprofit LLC that was created into the project for renovation purposes.
Okay, and just so I understand, is that, is that a similar structure that you've created in Morristown with that, that secondary LLC and that third tertiary?
That is.
So it's the same?
It's the same, and it's actually required by.
Okay, that was one of my questions, so thanks for explaining that. And then, can you just please explain the ground lease application? In line seven, it talks about the 99-year, can you just?
Yes.
So basically, Orbach would have a 99-year lease with the land? I was just totally confused on that, and I apologize for my naivety on that.
Not, not a problem. So the 99-year ground lease is really a function of HUD. Whenever you're dealing with a private-public partnership in order to make sure everyone understands that this is going to remain affordable housing for all of our lifetime and everyone that live in their lifetime, they require a long-term ground lease. So the long-term ground lease essentially says that the Housing Authority maintains ownership of this ground. Ultimately, the partnership can own, however you negotiate it out, the improvements above the ground, but notwithstanding the life of those improvements, which might be 15, 30 years, 45 years before someone does this all again, 99-year ground lease ensures that it can't become market-rate housing or anything else.
And then how many times has Orbach visited our properties?
I mean, I can't answer exactly. More than a dozen.
Okay. And I think my final question, sorry, I know what my final question was. It's pretty obvious in the news right now that Orbach in Morristown, at least from what I can see, we've, we've had some troubles. Do you have concerns with moving forward with them at this point?
No, not at all. So obviously, I'm living that news, and essentially, what's going on in Morristown is a tremendous amount of change. This project here is really a, what's called a RAD 2, because back in 2016, the Summit Housing Authority did a RAD conversion. That RAD conversion kind of locked Summit in at what are the current rates of rent, which are very low. I mean, Summit is a high-rent market, but Summit low-income housing is, has a very low rent. As a result of that, we're very limited in terms of what we can do. In Morristown, we're doing a $150 million project in a very condensed period of time for those units. Here, you know, we'll be fortunate to do 10% of that in terms of total volume, but the, the real difference, other than just the volume and amount of time that we're squeezing that amount of work in, is in Summit, we are retaining 100% control of the management and maintenance, both during and after the construction. In Morristown right now, a big part of the problem is the trend, we, we ultimately privatized management and maintenance, and while you're doing $150 million worth of construction, I would probably advise anybody, now with the lesson that I've learned, even though I've done these things quite a bit, you probably don't want to privatize, at least while you're doing the construction. Here, we're never going to privatize, but there we did it, and it's presented some challenges in terms of that conversion and transition.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Council President?
Yep.
Mr. Kennard, thanks for answering those questions.
Sure.
What would, so you've talked about that RAD conversion to all of us in some small conversations before.
Correct.
Can you explain what would be required to get us, I remember it was, it was a very heavy lift, if not impossible, to get us out of the initial RAD conversion when those low locked-in rents, so that the rents that you're getting are more in line with reality here?
Yeah, so the, from what I'm told, there's been one housing authority in the country that was able to get from the low locked-in rents, and there's, what, 3,200 or so odd housing authorities in the country, and how they were able to do it was because there was a natural disaster, and, and so unless we have a natural disaster, which a former deputy executive at HUD explained to me, our chances are, you know, not very good, because there are a lot of housing authorities that really rushed into the program in the early days, 12, 2012, 13, 14, and those housing authorities really wanted to convert, but they didn't necessarily want to do a comprehensive renovation, and they got stuck.
Yeah.
And that's kind of where we are.
When did we convert roughly? Do you know?
2016.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Director Kennard, for coming tonight. So if, what recourse do we have if there is a problem with Orbach?
During construction, during development, I mean, obviously, we have, within our contract, we'll have termination for convenience, termination for cause, we'll default provisions in terms of if you're not abiding by the contract, those types of things. I can say that, for the most part, in Morristown, we have not had construction issues. I mean, you're going to have construction issues, because these buildings were built 50 years ago, 40 years ago, et cetera, but those weren't our issues. So there's a whole set of remedies if you run into those issues. Again, our issues there are largely transitioned to private management, and I never thought we were so good at management until we got private management, to be honest with you, because, you know, we, we, you know, we dealt with a lot of complaints a lot of times, but, you know, now the residents seem to love us now that they don't have to deal with us every day. But, but rules have changed, and, and, you know, as you can imagine, the private sector deals with certain issues differently at times than we do that, that as a public housing authority, but we will have all of the traditional legal remedies in the contract that you would have with any developer or contractor.
Okay, and second question. Is there, can we compare ourselves to the Madison Housing Authority and what they charge for rent versus us?
Yes and no. So the Madison Housing Authority did what the Summit Housing Authority did, which is a, there's, there's multiple types of RAD. They did a very quick streamlined RAD in order to get out of public housing and to get into the Section 8 program. They did not look to do comprehensive modernization, so maybe they did $20,000 or $30,000 per unit, really a minimal amount, maybe even less than that, so they got locked in also.
And just for the public, for their knowledge, are we going to add any additional housing in this development on Weaver, Glenwood, and I guess Chestnut?
No, this, this right now is a RAD renovation program. It really is a focus on those three sites and getting those sites up to the best standard humanly possible.
Thank you.
Sorry, what?
Just a final question.
Oh, sure.
The total amount of the project, I assume, I think from what I remember, is $42 million. Is this bucket just for $10 million through Aspire, or is this just in general?
The 10 million is just Aspire.
Just Aspire?
Yes.
Okay. And then my final question, then I'll stop asking questions. What was the process to review the request for qualifications for the, for Orbach and the other organizations who contributed? Was the board involved, or was it a small planning committee, or what? I was just curious.
It, it was a, it's, so internally at housing authorities, the scoring process, there's a scoring sheet and metrics and all of that, is done by staff, and ultimately a recommendation is made to the board. In, in this process, we actually had a committee of the board involved. So, you know, during the interview stages and all of that, the, so they could advise the board and talk to the committee. But the actual scoring is done separately by the staff, and then ultimately a recommendation is made by me to the board.
Got it. Thank you. Actually, Council President, can I just say one more? I am concerned about the news, the Orbach in the news, but I will say that this renovation in and of itself is long overdue. So I'm looking forward to supporting it.
Thank you.
Okay. I am on a simplification kick, I think, tonight. I'm going to try to just break it down into my three couple things. The first is, of course, that the federal government is not providing money to be able to do these very desperately needed renovations, right? So they're, the, it is, it is required that a creative capital stack be put together to be able to fund this, partially through the private marketplace, partially through tax credits, partially through money that's available through the state and federal government in other ways. So that's number one. Number two is the housing authority has a board and professional staff that will continue to manage this whole process. And number three is, what we're doing here tonight is simply to say, we support you doing that. We like the idea of you doing that, and we would like for you to get as much money to do it as possible. That is my breakdown of this. I think we should open it up to comments from members of the public at this point. Thank you, Keith. Sure, come on up.
I live at 14 Lewis Avenue. I'm all for affordable housing, and I think it's great that you're going to rehab. But I'm just thinking if, so say very soon you might pass an energy plan, will the rehab include like green design? I know you mentioned like reducing carbon footprint. That's rather vague, I think, but like couldn't there be solar or there, like, I don't know, in this, in this rehab? I don't know.
So I, I think the answer would be yes. It would be a question that would be better directed to the, the housing authority staff or board at this point to talk specifics.
I'll just give some very, very brief specifics, and yes. One, it's required by the tax credit system that you actually do do, use, incorporate sustainable materials. We're looking to do that in a lot of ways, both in terms of the type of concrete, the recyclables that are used. There may be a cogeneration system put in. Solar is being looked at, wastewater removal, all, all of those types of things will be looked at. So yes, this will be a, a sustainable project. We don't know exactly what yet, because we are still cobbling together the, the funds. And once we are able to get a better feel for those funds, then we'll have a better feel for exactly what the scope will entail.
Yeah. That makes perfect sense to me. Thank you. Good answer. Any other comments from members of the public? Sure.
Hi, guys. So I'm Nancy Galletti. I'm the Chair of the Board of Commissioners of the Summit Housing Authority, and I just wanted to.
Can you come, bring, sorry, just for the people at home, it's tough.
That's right. I just wanted to come up and represent the seven members of the Board of Commissioners and because they're a dedicated source of volunteers who share their, their talents and their time to support this important organization. And our mission was to provide safe and affordable housing to low and medium income families in Summit. The thing about the Summit Housing Authority that's really special is that it was founded over 50 years ago, and it's a shining example of a private-public partnership. And that's the things that Summit does really, really well when they work together. So in the spirit of that, I just wanted to thank all of you guys for your support tonight and on our journey. I appreciate all the work that the Summit City staff has helped us with, all of you guys with your input, so that we can work together to, like you said, get the most money that we can get to build and renovate these buildings. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Okay, I think we're ready for a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. Thank you very much. Next up, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 10841 serves to adopt the Summit Community Energy Plan. The New Jersey Board of Public Utilities created a Community Energy Plan Grant Program to help municipalities prepare to meet the goals of the state's Energy Master Plan. The ultimate goal of the state, and therefore of our and each municipality, is 100% clean energy by the year 2050. On March 15th of 2022, this governing body adopted Resolution 40218, which was to apply for that grant, which, which was done and awarded, and this non-matching grant of $10,000 helped the, allowed the Environmental Commission to create this energy plan for our community. So the funds were spent over the past 18 or so months to draft this energy plan for the city, laying out the steps Summit can take to accomplish energy-related actions needed to meet that 2050 goal. The work will also be included in Summit's next master plan. At our last council meeting, we heard a summary of this energy plan by our, our Chair of the Environmental Commission. I will just give a very brief summary, just some items included in this energy plan include electrifying our municipal fleet of vehicles, maximizing energy efficiency for our municipal buildings, supportive zoning and permitting to allow for the municipality and for residents to install solar panels, requiring a green checklist by developers doing any development or construction in our city, to name a few. This community energy plan is an exciting endeavor. It's both comprehensive, yet attainable, and that is what I like about it. And it represents 1.5 years of a lot of hard work by our incredible Environmental Commission. And I enthusiastically move to adopt this resolution.
And I enthusiastically second that.
All right. And I enthusiastically ask for public comments. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Ooh. Hi, everybody.
Hi, I'm Bemmi Zukow. I'm the Chair of the Recycling Advisory Committee, a member of the Environmental Commission, and a founding member of the Summit Area Green Faith Circle. I am very excited by the community energy plan. Some of my colleagues on the Environmental Commission have worked extremely hard on it. In my opinion, climate change is an emergency, and we need to do everything we can to keep the earth habitable for us and for future generations. So I formally ask the council to adopt this measure.
Thank you. Can we just get your address as well, please? Sorry.
49 Wade Drive.
Thank you very much.
Donaghy and Fattell, 115 Beekman Road. I'm the Chair of the Environmental Commission. The Environmental Commission is proud to present the Community Energy Plan. It's the result of more than a year of work to identify potential actions Summit may take in the next three to five years. And the plan delineates the next steps for these actions and puts Summit in the strongest possible position to apply for the implementation grant funding expected in 2024. I did just want to clarify, we have not yet spent the $10,000. So we have that $10,000 to spend too, on feasibility studies for actions that we take in the future. We have met and are continuing to meet with local stakeholders to describe the plan, to share resources, and to discuss potential collaborations. And we look forward to seeing several of the actions in the plan move from potential to actual over the next few years, and we pledge to continue to advocate for and work on actions that are practical, achievable, and provide benefits to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's William Glancy. I'm a resident of Gillette, and I'm one of the leaders of the Summit Area Green Faith Circle. I would echo Bemmi's comments. I've reviewed this plan, and it exemplifies environmental stewardship, which is really what the Summit Area Green Faith Circle devotes so much of its time to. And I would strongly recommend that you, that you adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm still Karen Ventarella at 14 Lewis Avenue, and I'm also a member of the Summit Area Green Faith Circle, and I'm on the Summit Recycling Advisory Committee. And I agree with Bemmi that climate change is an emergency, and I would wholeheartedly hope the city would support the Summit Community Energy Plan and take the biggest steps possible that we can take as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Piddle Gale, 13 Lorraine Place. I've lived in Summit for 10 years with my husband and my 15-year-old daughter. I'm a member of the Summit Shade Tree Advisory Committee, and, for four years, and am committed to helping protect our important tree canopy, which we all love, and I'm so happy that we are a Tree City USA. Looking forward, I have to admit that I personally have fears about what the future holds with regard to climate change, and will we be able to ensure an, a healthy, livable future for ourselves, our children, and our grandchildren? I have heard the same worry expressed by my daughter and her friends. Will there be a world left for us? Recently, we got to hear from some of the other Summit teens in a program that the Shade Tree Committee and the city worked on with Reeves Reed Arboretum as part of the Fall in Love with Trees program. It was called the Summit Eco Action TikTok Fest, where we invited teens to show us what eco-action meant to them in a short-form video. And we received some great entries and had the chance to hear from them about the love of, their love of the environment and concern for the future, and they really do have that concern. So now I'm convinced more than ever that we have to look out for these kids from now and beyond, and it's critical that we have a plan to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions so that Summer, Summit is prepared for the future. So I support the Community Energy, Energy Plan.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Head, 39 Edgewood Road in Summit. And I have to say, I'm really pleased that there are so many people here to support this plan. I have attended quite a few of the Environmental Commission meetings this year. I'm also, I'm not on that. I am on the Recycling Advisory Commission, Committee, REC. And I have been really, really impressed with the members of the Environmental Commission, and in particular with the Chair. And, you know, I've seen the work that they do and the amount of time that they've spent. I think it's a really, a really good plan. It's thorough, it's achievable, it's reasonable. You know, if I was doing it, I think I would make it much more aggressive, because I think, you know, there is an awful lot more that we should be doing and thinking about for the future. But I think as, as the first community energy plan, it's, it's excellent, and I hope that all of you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Diego Hoick, Argal Court. And I want to say that this plan is a great plan, that's a great first step. We should, as Summit, be leading the state in having forward-thinking ideas about how to overcome the issues caused by global warming and other human activity. So congratulations, it's a great plan. I hope you approve it. But let's take the notion that we can always go from good to great and try to make it better every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, members of the public? I'll wrap this up by, oh, sorry, Marjorie.
Yeah. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight to, to comment on this. I've been, I've had the privilege to work with Donna on this project, and I've seen how much work she's done. And I want to thank her from the bottom of my heart for taking, for making this happen. And I also want to thank Director Erin Schreger and Assistant Director Jen Blades for the work that they've done to make this happen. We had, you know, a number of meetings where we sat down and talked about all the different things that were achievable, and I look forward to seeing how this is all implemented, and hopefully we get some grant money to, to make it happen. But I just wanted to, to say my thank yous to everyone for this amazing plan.
I just want to echo that. I mean, I've watched the amount of thoughtfulness and the integrity with which you, all of you on the Environmental Commission, the folks that are working at DCS who've been focused on this, I really put your honest appreciation for what the community needs and what the community can bear. And I really appreciate all your hard work, so thank you.
I'll, I'll summarize by just saying, this is a really big deal. This is, this is a big, this is a big thing, and I'm extremely happy to support it. So I think we should take a vote. What do we think? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations and thank you. Okay, moving on to the next one. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Per closed session discussion, Resolution 10867 appoints a new member to the Summit Housing Authority, Mr. Peter Elliott. I had a nice conversation with him. He is extremely qualified and enthusiastic, and I think he'll be a wonderful addition to that important team. And I move to adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. And last one from CAP. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Per closed session discussion, Resolution 10820 declares a vacancy in the Department of Community Services in the Fleet Unit as a mechanic. This vacancy is due to the retirement of an individual. It's a crucial position and must be filled. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. We are on to the consent agenda portion of the evening. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Somebody want a second? Excellent. Okay. Any conversation about this?
I'd just like to point out that there's menorah lighting on the Village Green. I believe it's Sunday, the 10th of December, six o'clock. So I hope everyone will show up for it. It should be, hopefully we have good weather, and it's, it's always a nice event and a very, it's, it's beautiful when you see the lighting at night and the, on the green. It's just, it's, it's a really nice experience, so I hope everyone will join us.
Thank you. Anything else on the consent agenda? Anything from members of the public? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We have a consent agenda. All right. We are on to the public comment portion of the evening. At this point, we welcome comments from any member of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes. Once? Twice? Okay. No public comments. We will move on to council member comments and new business. Anything? Yes?
I just wanted to, sort of following on from Director Schreger's comments about the sidewalk maintenance and installation document, we received a grant for $545,000 from the Safe Streets to Transit Grant from DOT to install sidewalks on Broad Street, from Walnut Street to Ashwood Avenue, and from, on Morris Avenue, from Upper Overlook to Denment Place. This is a grant that we've applied for many, many times, and we finally. This is a grant that we've applied for many, many times, and we finally got it, which is amazing. So this is going to allow us to, those are, this is a part of town that is not well-served by sidewalks. It also will allow, it will make it much easier for people to walk to the park line. So this is a really, really exciting project that I guess we can look for next year, the planning, at least the planning stages.
Yeah, it takes time.
Yep. So maybe next year or the year after, but it, but it will be happening, so that's exciting.
That is exciting. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember?
I second, uh, what Marjorie, whoa, I understand my mic's not working. I second what Marjorie said, and I'm, I've been a big sidewalk advocate, as most of you know, uh, from my non-council days, and right now, I'm just thrilled with seeing the sidewalk going to the arboretum on Hobart. It is just amazing, and it's going to be such an amazingly, it just makes the arboretum accessible, so much more accessible, which is the whole point of sidewalks. You know, that you can, you can go from neighborhood to neighborhood, you can, you're not constrained by not having a safe passage, and that's been my thing, to make this city as accessible as possible, especially where our parks, um, and facilities are. And I would really like to suggest that this next council take a look at putting a sidewalk in on woodland down to the muni. It's really missing. Uh, there was a big battle about a sidewalk on that part of woodland, and the council kind of caved in, but let's think about that. That muni, that whole section of woodland down there, it really could use a sidewalk. It'd make it so great if kids could walk down there, bike down there, and you don't have to worry about the traffic, which is rather intense, because you have, of course, River Road right there, too. Okay? Just wanted to throw that in. A suggestion for the next council.
That was a big battle over woodland several years ago. It was many councils ago.
But it is on the list again.
It's on the list again.
It's on the, it's on the sidewalk master, but on the, when the revision happens, that's one of those places that's been identified.
It just connects. It's, we're a city. We should have sidewalks everywhere.
Now that people don't have to pay for them, I think it's a little more palatable.
Yes, yes. I get to talking about sidewalks, and my wife gets jealous, so I, uh, I'm, yes, I'm in love with sidewalks. There are so many places, there, there are so many places around town where you walk, you're walking along the street, and the sidewalk ends, and you think, how did this happen? And, and let's hope that we can start to address that.
And that's what the plan is supposed to do, is address exactly that.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm, I'm, I've been staring at those maps all night. All right. Uh, any other councilmember, thank you. Any other councilmember comments? I think we could probably entertain a motion to adjourn at this point, right? Anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you. Anybody that had money on nine o'clock, sorry.